Order to pass six thirty. It's a regular board meeting here at Fairhaven Grade School. First order of business is to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Casey.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of America, one nation, one home, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate the people from home that in this bill. Alrighty, looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or changes to the agenda? I don't have any. Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving as presented, please say aye.
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 Alright, next, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from November thirteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, corrections, discussion on those minutes? Alright, hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Alright, next, public comment, round one, we'll start here in person, public comment. Anybody online with the public comment? Okay, no public comment. Next, Fairhaven Grade School, primary team presentation. I'll turn it over to Deb for introductions.
Thank you, good evening, board, and welcome to Fairhaven Grade School. This evening, we have our kindergarten and grade one team, looping team with us this evening. And they're, they are doing the looping practice, which we started back in two thousand sixteen, where a teacher stays with their students for more than one year. And this team is here with us this evening to share with you some practices that they have been doing in the area of literacy. Teaching kindergarten this year, we have Jared Daniel and Tiana McCray. And teaching first grade this year, we have Courtney Greener and Patty Roberts, who was out sick today and not able to do this. So I will turn it over to you guys.
I'm wondering if it makes the most sense for us, I know that this would require folks to turn, but we do have a slide deck that's going to be up on the screen over here.
Can you get one?
You're posing our way on us, my sorry to relooking folks.
I was sure.
This is fun for us, our audience is generally five, six, and seven years old. So this is a little bit of a shift. But we're excited to be here, thank you so much for having us. We feel very passionately as a team about some of the shifts that we've made with our literacy instruction over the last few years. And we wanted to take this opportunity tonight to kind of share with you what that looks like for us. The slide deck that we're about to show you is actually made by Courtney Greener. And it was made originally for a parent night. So we invited parents in as one of our evening events. And Courtney shared with, this was last year, so her kindergarten family, some of the shifts that we had implemented in regards to our literacy instruction, with the hope that it would engage families and empower them to understand these practices better and then implement them a little bit with their students at home. So we've modified the slide deck a little bit tonight to make it a bit more appropriate for this setting and this audience. And so we can kind of go through some of the things that we've changed and kind of what we're doing now. So Walter, if you want to click in the next slide, awesome. There has been a pretty substantial shift in the way that we are instructing literacy at Fairhaven Grade School that mirrors some trends nationally. The science of reading is kind of the umbrella in which a lot of our shifts fall under. So we've bulleted out a couple of different things that we wanted to highlight. One of those is the focus on letter sounds rather than letter names. All of these kind of bleed into one another in terms of kind of taking a more phonics-centered approach to literacy. Decodable text versus predictable text. This also relates very much to the encouraging readers to rely on sounding words out rather than picture cues. So many years ago, as part of balanced literacy, you may have heard of the three cueing system. So we would be cueing students using context clues, beginning sound in words or illustrations in a text, often a predictable text, and having them use those context clues to move their way through a text. We weren't necessarily working on robust phonics instruction where we were teaching students how to decode. That's the shift that's really changed. We're now encouraging students to understand sounds, so the alphabetic principle and letter sound correspondence, so that they can use their phonics knowledge to move through a text or to decode words. We're removing that cueing that you may have been familiar with if you had a student who was receiving any sort of literacy instruction at the primary level ten years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. Something else that we've started to do here at Fairhaven Grade School is a reframing of trick words into something called heart words. I believe that's our next slide.
Hold on, before we move on there.
Yeah.
One of the things that's also changed, to bring that back a little bit, is the blend-as-you-read strategy.
Yes.
When we first started teaching reading here many years ago, we would tap out the different sounds. And so if you're saying sit, it'd be s-it, and then you'd bring it together. And lots of times, you'd have the children, their last sound t would probably be brought back to the front again, because that's the last one they heard. So with the blend-as-you-read strategy, they're singing, I call it singing, because in kindergarten, they don't understand what blend means. So it's basically stretching that sound out, and you're taking that s-sit. So then they're not bringing that last sound back forward. And they're reading it in order and blending those sounds together. Because of this switch, most of our kindergarten students are already reading words before November even hit. So that slight switch makes a big difference in reading ability for the children. Now we can go to the trick words and heart words. Trick words and heart words, the difference. When we were growing up, it was always trick words. We don't understand, you know, they're rule breakers, basically. But the way we're teaching it now is there a heart word? Because there are parts in that word that do still make sense, that do follow the rule. So then they can look at those words and say, okay, this one and this one makes sense, this is the section that doesn't. And that section is the only part that you have to learn by heart, which is why we call them heart words now. And so the children can all, even in kindergarten, they can tell you which part's a heart word. My kids can tell you that why he, we, me, all those, why the e says the long e sound, because there's nothing, they'll say there's no door closing yet, there's not another consonant at the end, so it's saying that long e sound. So once they learn the rule, they realize that that heart part is gone. For that heart part is not something that stays forever. It's just something that they don't know yet, that word yet.
If you think about the importance of language with kids, we used to refer to them as trick words, and kids would shut right down. Because like, oh, this is going to be challenging, this is going to be tricky. And they would just immediately shut right down. So now with the heart words, we say, hey, this is expected, hey, this is expected, oh, there's a little part you need to know by heart. So they're already feeling that boost of confidence, because I expected this to happen, I expected this to happen. And instead of being tricked by the part that's unexpected, it's a little bit exciting, right, to find the part that's unexpected, to be like, there's that little rule breaker. And then they have that confidence to blend that word, to say that word.
And just some fun ways that both in school and at home, that parents could do with their kids to help them with heart words. Just one of them I'll mention are the Legos, just using a regular washable marker or vis-à-vis marker, and you write the sounds, not the letters, the sounds, on each Lego. And then they have to read a word and put it together. So Courtney put the word set up there, so on a Lego, you'd have the s, the ai, which makes one sound, and then the d. And they would have to put them all together and realize that that middle part is a heart part of that word. It helps reinforce to read.
So one of the things, one of the purposes of this slide deck was to really help parents have some knowledge about what they could be saying when reading with kids. So here are some like little buzzwords, and we know in education, sometimes these words are confusing, and you don't, parents don't necessarily know what all these words mean. So we wanted to make the words that we're using with kids in school also familiar to the family members that are reading at home. So for example, summarization is the most important comprehension work. It's really at the center of all we're going to do regardless of grade level. So we really want to talk about things like, who are the characters? And we're using visuals with the students, so that they're recognizing the visuals, they're using the vocabulary, and then their families are using that same vocabulary. Setting, where and when does the story take place, the problem. And we also use some good, you know, some movement, like with the problem, we'll try to make a lightning bolt, so we'll say, what is the problem? And ch-ch-ch, psh. So we try to really get them into it with visuals, with movement, with body. Solution, how is the problem solved? The events, we tell in order, like beginning, middle, and end. So you'll see that there's a roller coaster, and we really think about what it's like at the beginning of the roller coaster. And we're kind of introducing who the characters are and what is the setting at the beginning of the book. And then as that roller coaster's getting closer to the top, we're talking about what's the problem. And as it starts to go down, we're talking about how the problem was solved, and then we have that ending. The other thing that's really great, early on for families to be sharing, is the making connections. So as we're reading stories, like saying, like, has anything like this ever happened to you? And having kids be able to connect in many different ways, whether it's, yes, I've been to the beach before, and this book is about going to the beach, or anything. Because kids very young love to talk about themselves, and we need to help them just build those connections into, how do I connect to other people? How do I connect to other things? There is a video that, and that little seesaw button here, and it may or may not work, we're fingers crossed in it. But one of the, one of the ways we work on retelling, even as young as kindergartners, is around the success criteria. And so we really talk to kindergartners about what does a retelling look like at a one, two, three, and four? And so my students do that work through an online app called Seesaw. And they, if I read a story to the class, then they go onto their app and then create a video for me to watch. And what we do is watch the video as a whole group, and then we rate it on a scale of one, two, three, or four. And the students are actually in the habit of always wanting to improve their work, always wanting to do a little bit better. Also with the videos, you can leave verbal, and I'll show you in just a minute, hopefully. And there's, what we do is we always leave a compliment for the person who has created the video, and then we leave a recommendation. And like, it would be really great, they'll be the first ones to say, like, when someone gives a recommendation, they look forward to hearing the recommendation, because they want it to be stronger, and they want to raise their score. So if we're able to take a peek at that, Walter. Oh, okay. That's okay.
Not sure.
No worries. So what, the, what would, so there would be a kindergartner on the screen, and she just says, I read this book. So we have a checklist, and using those same visuals, we have this little checklist. And the kids will look at the checklist and say, I need to say what I read. So I read Alligator Baby, and then they push pause. And then they look at their checklist, and they prepare inside their brain what they want to say next. The, the problem in this story was, and then they say, the problem in this story was, and then they press pause. So they have something visually, they have something with words, it's right there to kind of keep them moving. And then again, they're going to get that feedback, which is just a press of a button and listening to a student in their classroom tell them. So like that, in that particular video, someone said, wow, you really hit everything, that sounds terrific, way to go. And it's just something with a compliment. And then with the recommendation, you know, it might be something like, oh, next time, just give a little bit more details in your beginning, middle, and end, so.
And so with all of this, we obviously want to change the models and the instruction, how we're delivering it to students. And what's interesting is we're kind of rooting our instruction in what is considered best practice in current research. But there's a little bit of autonomy on our team, where Tiana and I, who are teaching kindergarten this year, are doing something a little bit different than what Courtney and Patty are doing in first grade. And so we're going to dive in just briefly into some of the different nuances of those models and how we feel it's benefiting students. I think the first and probably most important thing to note is that this instruction is inherently differentiated. So we're doing a lot of small group instruction. For Tiana and I, we're looking at literacy instruction as an entire grade level, so all of kindergarten, rather than class by class. And within that, we're looking at students who have skill gaps or skills that we would like to target, so we can place those students into skill groups. During our small group instruction time, we can then work with those small groups of students to target those individual skills, or the skills that are most pressing for those learners. Something that's also very important in this model is that there's a lot of fluidity. So if a student is demonstrating proficiency with a skill, we're not holding that student in that group. We want to be able to move them into a group that's going to be a better fit. So if there's a student who is struggling with digraphs, then, you know, over the course of several weeks, is demonstrating that they're understanding and applying that much better than they were a month ago, Tiana and I can look at, okay, well, what's the next skill that we need to target for that student to continue progressing them through, to meet that kind of proficiency benchmark? And then I can talk a little bit more, or Courtney can talk a little bit more about her.
I'll add to ours, too. We also look at it differently every year when our kids come through and where they're at at that stage. Because this year, a lot of the kindergarten students coming in, we found have a lot of language deficits, whether it's articulation or missing words, or they don't know how to even speak in full sentences yet. So four days a week, we're doing the language skill group based for reading. And then the fifth day, we're getting our whole kindergarten together, and we're working on prepositions, following two-step directions, oral motor exercises, all that. Because if they don't have that background and that basis, they're not going to be able to move forward, no matter how much we teach them in reading. So it's every group we're looking at different, and seeing where those skills are needed, and evaluating how we're going to schedule our reading groups with that.
And one of the biggest, one of the biggest gains that we get from looping is that there's a lot of academic instruction time. And so we know our students, we know, especially as a first grade teacher this year, like, I knew all my students. There was certainly some regression, but I knew where they were at the end of last year, so I knew where we could start. And I knew how, how much I could push and how much I could challenge very, very early on in the school year. And in kinder, in first grade this year, we are using a little bit of a different model, and I am providing all of the literacy instruction to all first graders. And Patty Roberts provides all of the math instruction to all first graders. So we're looking at it very similarly, in that I look at every single one of my thirty students as a whole, as a grade, is just, and because of that, all of those great things, like the fluidity, I can move them at any point. So they're all within my reading groups, and I can move them to, based on what their skills are and where their proficiencies are.
And then the one great thing that we had on there is that we also have increased access to the school-based interventionist. And that is, this is not something where it's been given extra to us. Before, they would come in and they would, because of our schedules, they would only be able to take one child or two children. And they wouldn't be able to be able to interact with as many children and help as many. But because the way we're doing it with the fluid model here, they're able to come in and either stay in the class that is working with the, with some specific skill that they're working with and work with the whole group, or they can stay for half of it and pull the kids for half the time. They can be very fluid on what they're doing and what the children need as well, too, because we've based them by skill group.
And one thing that we know about looping is that young children build a really close, tight bond with their K-one teacher. And so by exposing them to many different teachers at such a young age, it's, it's an easier transition as they get ready to go to second grade. They haven't just solely been with that one teacher for two years. They've really had more experiences than just that.
This is kind of like our so what. We're talking to you a lot about these practices that we're working to implement. And obviously, if we're implementing new practices or we're changing the way in which we instruct, we'd like to see some outcomes associated with that. I think there's a very subjective component to this as well. I think amongst our team, I can feel confident speaking for everyone. When we feel really good about the engagement that we're seeing from students, members of our team and across the district have expressed that they're seeing gains more rapidly in kind of utilizing a science or reading approach. And so we want to look to the data to kind of back that up, if it can. And so what we have up on the screen here is kindergarten student growth data from last year. So from fall of last year through spring of last year. So these students, I believe are Courtney's students. They are all first graders now, but this is their data from last year. The data is pulled from Star 360, and I believe the board heard a little bit about Star 360 last month. And Casey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I want to be correct in how I'm speaking about Star 360. But it is a tool that we're using locally in Slate Valley as an assessment tool. We're having students engage with that tool three times a year, once per trimester, with the ability to progress, monitor some more specific things as we go throughout the year. So there's an opportunity for much more frequent progress monitoring for things like segmenting and blending or letter sounds. This data is specifically from those three tests that we take, trimester one, trimester two, and trimester three. And what's interesting about this data is it's the student growth percentile data. So we want to make sure that students are growing in an identified content area. We understand that growth looks different for many students. Proficiency and growth are two different things. But what we want to see is that students are growing. And the student growth percentile looks at, or compares, a student's growth to that of his or her academic peers nationwide, performing at a similar ability level. And so what you're looking at in this pie chart here is that seventy-seven point eight percent of students were above that fiftieth growth percentile rank. So they were growing more than fifty percent, or growing more than fifty percent of their same-grade peers with similar ability levels. So obviously, a very significant percentage are achieving above that fiftieth percentile mark, which is great news for us. Then there were eighteen point five percent of students that hovered in that twenty to forty-nine percentile rank. And then I think there's a single student up there representing three point seven percent that fell below that benchmark. But when we're looking at this data and we're interpreting it, we're feeling really good about the amount of growth that students are demonstrating. Even if that means that a student isn't proficient in that skill, if we're not marking a three on their report card, we can use this metric to justify our practice and understand that it is allowing students to progress through the identified skills that we're working on, if that all makes sense. I think I, I think I got it.
And some ways that parents can help at home with their children. We just wanted to talk about different things that parents could do at home as well. And reading to self, having the kids just have eyes on print, whether it's a book that they brought home from school, a book from the library. It could even be your mail, and they're trying to find letter sounds and highlight different letter sounds or different sight words that they can learn. A daily routine, having it printed out, and they're having to read. Okay, first, I put water on my toothbrush, then I, and read those daily routines. Doing independent reading by themselves, reading for pleasure. So having them pick out a book that they like. And then rereading for fluency, because we all know that the more we read the same books over and over again, the better readers we become, we become more fluent with our skills. And then adults modeling that reading at home.
And just giving families the information that they can be doing these, that kids are doing these things inside the classroom, and that they also can be doing it at home. So, you know, sometimes families will say like, oh, my gosh, I'm trying to get dinner ready, and they just keep bothering me. And I can say, well, I know that in my classroom, they can read by themselves for fifteen minutes. And they're like, oh, what? So that's this really great thing to kind of share with parents, that, yeah, they can read before school, and they can read before bed, and they can read while you're making dinner. And they, and so the great thing is, is that it doesn't have to, reading is something that can be enjoyed all by themselves, so they don't have to have somebody readily available.
And I actually sent home sentences with half of my kindergarten class today, their first time they brought home homework, per se. And I wanted them to read to their families. And they were like, well, what if my mom and dad are too busy to read? And I was like, well, do you have a stinky shoe? Because they think that's funny, it's kindergarten. I said, read to your stinky shoe. They're like, they started giggling, like, oh, we can do that. I said, how about a stuffed animal? Yeah, we can read it to our stuffed animal. Said, so if your mom or dad are busy, there's other things you can read it to. And that's just part of that reading to self. And then reading to someone, it can be the parents, the siblings, family, friends, pets. It can be daycare workers, it can be anyone, anyone that walks into your house. Encourage your child to read to them, even if it's just one sentence, or finding sounds, or finding sight words, any of those.
And this is a really great one to do with technology. So family members that are far away would love to, to sign on and be able to listen to their grandchild reading, or their niece or nephew reading. So that one's a really great one to use tech, technology and help out.
And then listen to reading. It is shown that students, children, no matter what ages they are, can understand language that is two years above their reading level. And we want to expose that to them, children, that, I can speak at this point. Expose all the children to those words, those vocabulary. Fiction books have great vocabulary. Words like stumbled and squished, and the kids will ask what they mean. And then when you get into nonfiction, then you're really learning facts and more words. And we want kids to be exposed to all this. So whether they're listening to Story Online, which is a free app, or listening to teachers read to them, or family read to them, to really encourage parents to get out books, and not just the books that they're reading at their level, but to really expose them to more language by reading books to them that are above their level.
And here at the school level, like, we, we use older students and other kids. And so that's a great way to just be using, using lots of other kiddos and lots of other adults for that kind of activity. The last couple of slides are really about how reading connects homeschool and community. And we're really talking about how we can really get parents, not only parents invested, not only kiddos invested, but the community as a whole, and really enriching students as readers. One way that we do that within our school is this Galactic Book Club community sponsor. Each year, I put out through Facebook that I would like community sponsors to give a donation, and then it allows students in my classroom to get a order, a book, from the book order every single month. So overwhelmingly, I get lots and lots of donations, and I purchase the books. And on the first day of every new month, my students literally get to just look at all these new books and get to pick one. So we say that we're growing our personal home library. And I just talked to the families right off the bat in kindergarten about how like, I want to help you grow your home library. We, and we open up the book, and we write inside it the home library of, and write the student's name. So someday, when they're twenty years old, they're going to open up that book and remember that that started in kindergarten, when Ms. Greener was growing my home library with me. So we have growing our library in lots and lots of different ways. So now the parents are helping, the community is helping, Ms. Greener's helping. We have a class library, and it's quite big and extensive. We also have book boxes, so they each have an individual book box, and they can put books that they choose from our school library. They can put books that we're reading in reading group. They can choose books from our classroom library, or bring books from home. And then they have this little magazine holder that they can take with them when they're doing reading inside the classroom. We utilize the school library, we utilize the town library. I encourage my families to visit a bookstore. There's nothing more exciting than going to a bookstore and being able to look through all of those great books that you can pick. Finding characters that you know, or authors that you know. And I really share with my family about normalizing giving books as gifts. So sometimes our kids are really used to big technology gifts, and really like normalizing that receiving a gift is, or receiving a book is a really cool thing. So in our classroom, like, if a student has a birthday, I give them a gift of a book as their, as their birthday gift. And then the next slide, and this is just a continuation of some of the other things that families can do as, just to make reading fun. So building indoor and outdoor reading destinations, so using our outdoor classrooms for a school. I brought a tent into the classroom, so those kids are inside a tent in our classroom with flashlights, reading books inside their tent. Doing author and character studies, just a really great way to expose kids to different literature. Kids are naturally drawn to literature that has characters that they've seen on TV, or characters that they're familiar with. So just really opening the doors for them to, to find out about characters from long ago they're super interested in, like, what did you read when you were a kid? And showing them different books. Reading a book and then watching a movie, so you're able to compare and contrast what's same and what's different. Using songs and poems and movement, poetry. Dressing up, using props, creating a setting. So if you're learning about a particular, if you're reading a particular book, like, really kind of creating your whole classroom, or your, or your home, to look like the setting that takes place in that book. And then, as I said, like with the flashlights, in our book boxes, we have flashlights. So we always turn all the lights off when we're reading in the classroom. And we also have magnifying glasses. So inside their book box, they have a flashlight, and they have a magnifying glass. So those props just make it a little bit more exciting and a little bit more fun. And these are all things that we can do. And sometimes, like, when we're presenting this kind of information to parents, like at the literacy workshops, they get excited, they get rejazzed, right? Because they're like, oh, I didn't think of that. And so it kind of makes them exciting to try these things with their kiddos.
That brings us to the end. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I guess I do have one question. That was a great presentation, by the way, thank you very much. So I'm always concerned when I hear that language skills are not, not... language skills are not where they should be for so many students as they enter public school. Do you have support, and I know you have some, but do you feel like you have the support of speech aids, psychologists? I know that articulation is not something we we try to remediate anymore, which I don't necessarily agree with, but regardless, that's not my, my issue. You know, how do you feel about that support for language?
Well, I have to say that Kim Gould is amazing at our schools. But I also know that she is working her tail off. And when I ask her questions or when any of us ask her questions, we get immediate response back and input back from her, as well as Becky, Nikki? I know, I know where's Becky. She also responds very quickly back to us. I had a student where I wasn't sure if it was his artic or his reading ability and which one was causing the difficulties. And so I emailed her and said, okay, tell me what sounds he knows and what position. So that way I can test to see if he actually can read or if it's articulation that's causing the difficulty. And she responded right back. So we're getting a lot of responses that way. When it comes to the group that we're working on, we're doing a lot of, I taught the pre-K special ed here for 20 years. So I have sort of that background basis there. And then Jared has, he's my research guru over there. He'll research anything. And then we go back to Kim and Becky as well and say, hey, we're thinking about this, what do you think? So we're doing a lot of the background piece on those, that Friday day. But we're also getting that input from the speech language apologists.
Good.
Does that make sense?
It does, for sure. And do let us know if you need more support along those lines, because it's so important at that age.
It is very important.
I'm impressed by your enthusiasm. And, and I gotta believe that it's infectious with the kids. And I just, I just wanted to throw that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this level, you're putting on a show. You are putting on a show every single day.
Yep. If you're not taking the cool yourself in a kindergarten classroom, you're not impressed.
It's a unique position to be in. I mean, we really have this privilege of laying the foundation for what education looks like for these students. And literacy is so inherent in every other core content area. So if we can bring some enthusiasm or we can increase student engagement now, the hope is that that will continue to kind of snowball down the road for students as they get a little bit older. So we, I think I can speak for all of us when I say we take a lot of pride in that.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll turn it over to Tony or Julie?
Julie.
Julie with the Policy Committee?
Yes.
Update?
Okay, so we had a lot of policies. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 policies that we talked about today. We will warn two after I'm done talking. And we reviewed one, two, three, four, five. And then there are one, two, three, four, five that we are sending back to, Brooke's going to take them back to her team and different parts of her team to rewrite, potentially add language, delete language. The V S B A, very recently, August and October, it seems, did a lot of policy revamp. So some of our policies need to switch to the most current version of the policy. So the two, let's see, the ones that we just reviewed, and we're just going to, we document reviewed on the bottom of that we just talked about, are the substitute teacher, B1. B2, volunteer and work study. Work study, meaning a post-secondary student who is being, not compensated, yes, compensated for their work with us. So that's can be, that was a little bit challenging term because work study means different things in different places. Alcohol and drug-free workplace was reviewed. Drug and alcohol testing of transportation employees was reviewed. And staff conduct with students was reviewed. The ones that we're sending back for either discussion or a change in language of some sort are curriculum development and coordination, possession and use of tobacco products, electronic communication between school employees and students, personnel recruitment, selection appointment and background checks, and public complaints about personnel. All had some language in there that was carryover from ARSU that we need to kind of revamp or needs to be talked about within Brooke's team to kind of make sure it's meeting the needs of the school right now and that we're not missing anything. Any question? I know that was a lot. Any questions on those at all? Anybody? Okay. We are asking to warn F3, fire and emergency preparedness drills and harassment of employees. B5. I make a motion to warn F3, fire emergency preparedness drills, and B5, harassment of employees.
Second.
Are there any questions? Do the policies that we're choosing to warn tonight potentially are brand new?
No, they are ones that we had zero changes to or we, oh, no, they are brand new.
Well, no, they're not brand new. They're just, there's updated V S B A language due to changes in the law. And so just to bring them in compliance with that.
Anything else that you want to point out?
No, just the V S B A does a good job referring to their, their kind of like legal things on the bottom of those, right? Really making sure that we're hitting all the points that need to be hit. So nothing super dramatic on any of them.
Any other questions?
We felt like there was something dramatic, we either, we sent it back.
Other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving to warn F3 and B5, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Again, Brooke, if you could just make a note to include those policies with the attachments for next and be mindful of voting to adopt.
Yep. And can I just, I haven't actually looked to see if this is, but do we, does everybody get the policy email?
No.
No, it only goes to Policy Committee. Okay.
The agenda's posted online, but yeah.
The agenda's posted online. Okay.
I'm sorry, which ones are being warned?
F3, fire and emergency preparedness drills.
Okay.
And B5, harassment of employees. Both F3 and B5.
Anything else, Julie?
Nope, I just, no, it's good.
Next, I'll turn it over to Peter, Chair of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, for updates and summary.
All right, so we talked about bond discussion again. So we're going to work forward on, Chris is going to give us basically a list of what needs to be done in each building. And we're going to go from there to figure out what, what needs to be done or what we can afford to do in a bond. So we can come up with an amount for the bond. So we're working on that. Pump station, the pump station is coming along a little slower than Chris wants, but it's coming. Hopefully, it's going to start pretty soon. The locker room project hopefully has an end date of the end of December. Sheet rock's going up, most of Havak's done. So it's coming along good. And then storm order runoff at the high school and at Castleton. We put our application into the state. If they accept it, or for the funding, we get 90% paid for by the state and we pay only 10%. And they also did the engineering and design work for it at both places. So hopefully, if we don't get the funding, we get to try again the next round. Hopefully, that works out. That's it.
Questions, Julie?
Yes, I have a question. So as we all have talked about in the past, we heard from the public at our last kind of annual meeting that they would like for what we need to be fixed in the school meeting. It's like to be in our budget as much as possible. Is that, is everybody, isn't that kind of what we kind of come back with? So when we had our, it was like an annual meeting.
Last February?
Yeah, like last February. Some of the big comments were, yes, we know there's maintenance issues, but we should be putting them in the budget. And, and I feel like we've talked about that periodically throughout. So when we, when you guys are talking about this bond and presenting this bond, are you, I, I think we need to be very clear about what's in the budget, like what the budget can handle and what the budget cannot handle so that they understand kind of like where that falls.
Well, we are talking about that, like Chris is saying, there's some projects that won't go into the bond just because we can do them in-house. So we're not going to do like a small boiler where it's just a boiler being replaced and there's no engineering or anything like that. So it's basically the big infrastructure needs that we can't, that we can't put into a bond, into a budget, just because the cost is so high.
Okay. I just am transparent about that. I think people really want to know like, what's in the budget? What are we going to handle with our budget? And what are we not going to handle with our budget? That's all, that's all it is.
Well, one of the things, you know, we've talked of the last couple of years and I think we've made it clear to voters that, you know, there are a lot of deferred maintenance items, which is what we're trying to address here.
Yep.
Any other questions for Peter or Buildings and Grounds? I will add too, just the, the timing of the budget vote or not vote. We're thinking about a year from now in November. That would give us plenty of time to discuss this as a full board and to certainly make the efforts necessary to reach out to our community. And certainly having the, the vote in November would, you know, with the presidential election being next November, there would be high turnout at that point in time as well. So there'd be a lot of participation. You know, as Peter mentioned, we've asked Chris to kind of give us a tier one, two, and three of priority level and cost. You know, the Buildings and Grounds Committee is going to consider that hopefully at the next meeting or two. And then at that point, we would bring it back to the, the full board for, you know, a more robust discussion.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks, Peter. Public comment round two, is there anyone here in person? Anyone online virtually with a public comment? No public comments? Executive session, I'm not aware that we need any, Brooke?
No.
No executive session necessary? Okay, agenda building for our next meeting in early December. The Finance Committee is meeting beforehand as well to mull over any potential updates that might be available. What else on the agenda?
I mean, we'll have some adoption of policies, possibly the F3 and the B5. Ben is going to be doing a presentation on some of the work he's doing around the teen center with some of our community partners. And, I mean, I think we also need to make a decision on whether or not we're having the December 18th board meeting because you have December 11th and 18th back to back. And so depending on what happens at the finance meeting, you might want to even swap the December 18th board meeting for a finance meeting, you know, if you need more time to discuss budgets, so.
All right, so it's potentially, it might be likely that we only have one.
We're going to get a full board meeting. I don't know if you need two full ones. I think it's going to, a lot's going to depend on that next finance meeting.
And what did we last leave Lisa Cacciatore with in terms of planning of listening tours?
That we were doing that for January.
Okay, so do we need to give her any more guidance at that December meeting?
I don't think so. I think we can just bring you dates and
Or hear the plan?
Yeah.
On December 11th?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, right.
Just a couple other topics I know that are going to come up soon, whether it's next meeting or shortly thereafter, is just the board reconfiguration. We talked about that in Benson a couple months ago. We might want to just open that back up again for any further discussion or thoughts. Okay, because again, that would require a vote of the electorate to make any changes. And then maybe just to talk about, you know, board reconfiguration in sense of, you know, who's, who might be choosing to run again, who might be choosing to retire or not run again, what potential vacancies might exist upon reorganization in March? Because if we know of there being vacancies, it might be beneficial to start recruiting people in advance of having to have your petitions in, in, in January. I know the V S B A sent out an email today about, you know, just that, the fact that there's a lot of vacancies statewide on school boards and how to better engage our community with participating in the process. So I want to talk about that sooner than later.
I can have the list of the expiring terms for the next board meeting.
Any other suggested agenda items?
On the December 18th one, there would be a Buildings and Grounds meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, Chris and I briefly talked about, like I think we still need Building and Grounds and Policy that night. But I think my suggestion would be if we cancel the regular board meeting, that we have Building and Grounds and Policy at the high school because I think Building and Grounds Committee should see the near-completed renovation. And we never have Building and Grounds Committee meetings at the high school. So I think that might be an opportunity to do that and just relocate those committee meetings.
Yeah, well, I would think we should have it anyways because of the bond thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we need to have policy anyway. I think we still need to have committee meetings. I just don't know if we have enough for a full board agenda that night.
Okay. Anything else for agenda items? Okay, this is a quick meeting tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Subdue.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.